Do all of you know that it's actually seven o'clock? That's why everybody just stopped talking.
Good evening and welcome to our Student Academic Awards tonight. We're delighted to have all of you here to recognize our best and brightest in the district. So, we are going to get started. For our honorees, we'll start with our Superintendent's Awards tonight. And when I call your name, you'll come down, shake hands, and after we congratulate you and allow your families to take your picture, then we'll have you just wait right over onto the side so that you can come back for a group picture once we do all of the award winners. The Superintendent's Student Recognition Award is presented annually in conjunction with the Connecticut Association of Public School Superintendents. Criteria for selection is based on community service, academic prowess, and leadership in the school community. Our first honoree tonight is Henry King from Burr. Henry is an exemplary person in every way. He is a successful student who excels in all areas. Henry is an especially strong reader who can always be counted on to have a book in his hand no matter what is happening around him. As Henry says himself, "I am the student who is always striving to do better and to work even harder than required." Henry also has extensive community service work. For his church, he made shoes out of jeans for people in Africa, made pillows for shelters, and made presents for refugees in Syria. Every year, Henry and his dad go to the Norwalk Cemetery on Memorial Day to put many American flags on veterans' graves, to his Henry States, remember their service, their acts of heroism, and to remember their sacrifice that gave others a better life. Congratulations to Henry King. Next honoree, Indiana Smith from Dwight. Indy is kind, genuine, appreciates the beauty in the world and what it has to offer. She is artistic and has the ability to bring the magical moments alive through both her writing and her photographs. She is a wonderful role model as seen in her interactions with others in Safety Patrol. Academically, she strives to put forward her best effort across all areas of the curriculum. Her passion is writing. She gets lost in books and engages in all public speaking projects. Indy was selected for Poetry for Peace and has consistently participated in the district-wide Reflections Contest. She plays basketball and participates in Wakeman. She loves hiking in Colorado, playing board games with her family. Her family regards her as dependable, compassionate, loyal, and responsible. Indy lives by the values she is raised by. She does the right thing because it is the right thing to do. Congratulations. Caroline Branscombe from Holland Hill. Caroline is well-known to the Holland Hill community for her kind and respectful approach to all staff and students. A friend to all, Caroline is hardworking and has high standards for herself, both academically and socially. Caroline participates in band and in Holland Hill Heroes, and she is a valued member of the Holland Hill Safety Patrol. An additional part of her daily Safety Patrol duties includes a special job geared towards assisting a kindergartner. Caroline starts each day by walking this student from his classroom to the cafeteria so that he can get his breakfast. An accomplished athlete and Girl Scout, Caroline participates in community service for Operation Hope with a Girl Scout troop and is also part of a team of Holland Hill 5th graders organizing a supply drive for pets at the Westport Humane Society. Congratulations. Kyla Lamb from Jennings. Kyla is a role model who leads by example. Academically, her classwork is exemplary. Independently, she coded two Reaction Time games that she presented to the class, both of which engaged and challenged her peers. Perhaps she is a computer programmer in the making. She is always willing to lend a helping hand and is a constant positive support in the library and with younger students. She even designed graphic organizers for kindergarten students and shines while teaching them. Outside of school, she is a gifted artist, often participating in art contests and strengthening her mind and body with Kung-Fu, swimming, and orchestra. We are so proud to have Kyla as part of our Jennings community and wish her continued success in the years to come. Congratulations. Yaya Hassan from McKinley. Yaya has been a distinguished member of the McKinley community since his arrival from Egypt in 3rd grade. Over the past 3 years, he has been an asset to each of his classes, respectful to all he encounters, and is an active member of the McKinley and Fairfield community as well. At McKinley, he is a member of Student Council taking part in fundraising for the American Heart Association, the American Cancer Society, and the Juvenile Diabetes Foundation. In addition, Yaya is a member of McKinley's Drama Club Orchestra and is a kindergarten bus patrol leader. He also attends Arabic school where he volunteers to help younger students with their classes. He is also part of the Fairfield United Soccer Association where his commitment to teamwork is evident in his play. We are proud of Yaya and his accomplishments, both here at McKinley School and in the Fairfield community. Congratulations. Margaret Zano from Mill Hill. Maggie's enthusiasm and kind nature make her an ideal classmate and role model to her peers. Whenever Maggie's name comes up, every teacher at Mill Hill agrees she embodies the spirit of the Superintendent's Award. She always does her personal best in school and is a high academic achiever. She is helpful and always offers assistance to her teachers and classmates wherever it is needed. Outside of school, Maggie raises money for worthy causes through her bake sale. She has also made cards and valentines for people in nursing homes. In her free time, Maggie enjoys playing basketball, soccer, and lacrosse. We are proud to acknowledge Maggie for this well-deserved honor. Congratulations. Nathan Jackson from North Stratfield. Nate has been chosen to receive this award based on his ability to be a leader and his strong values towards his community and those closest to him. Nate values kindness, compassion, and family and demonstrates these values whenever possible. Nate donates money, picks up trash, and runs road races in support of cancer survivors and refugees. Even at his young age, he is aware of important social causes that impact communities well beyond North Stratfield and Fairfield. In addition, Nate loves to learn. His curiosity and motivation to truly understand and why things work has been the foundation that supports his love of learning. Nate also shows compassion towards his peers on a daily basis, and his friends often go to him for help and support. Nate loves baseball, theater, and music and values the importance of being balanced. Congratulations. Lila De La Porta, Osborne Hill School. Lila is Osborne Hill Selection for a Superintendent's Award. Lila prides herself on her academic accomplishments in the area of language arts but is particularly proud of being selected, the 2017 One Book One Town winner, for writing an essay about the book Out of My Mind. In her spare time, Lila volunteers at a horse farm in Easton and works with her Girl Scout friends donating time and items to Urban Impact, a Bridgeport group that offers after-school activities for at-risk youth. Lila has dedicated her life to sharing kindness and changing the world. She closed her essay for this award by stating, "There is a chance to make this world better, and I'm gonna take it." Virginia Lavasser from Riverfield. Jenny is being recognized for her kindness, work ethic, and empathy. She is a dedicated student who supports her friends in class, includes others in her social circles, and truly cares for others' feelings. Jenny befriended a student in her 2nd grade class with many physical and academic challenges. She started a movie club with him that year and has continued this tradition whenever a new movie comes out. She also invites other students to share in their special friendship. Jenny's extracurricular activities include acting, cheerleading, Girl Scouts, and singing in a competitive performance group and the church choir. Jenny is a wonderful sister to her younger sibling Annalise who says, "Jenny is always kind to me." She even watches shows with me that she does not really like just to make me happy." Jenny's compassion for others is what truly makes her worthy of this award. Congratulations, Jenny. Maggie McCarthy, Roger Sherman. The ever-cheery Maggie is always looking for ways to help others. She is a safety patroller, taking 2nd graders to their buses and to stop kiss-and-go. Maggie also plays the cello in the orchestra and is a Girl Scout. She participates in many community service projects such as wrapping presents and cooking for Operation Hope, and she works the water station for the Fairfield Half Marathon. In her own neighborhood, she often can be seen helping mothers with their toddlers. In her free time, Maggie dances, plays golf, skis, cooks, and bakes. She also loves the beach and spending time with her friends. Congratulations, Maggie. Emily Dowd, Stratfield School. Emily is the type of child who puts a smile on everyone's face the minute she walks through the doors at Stratfield School. In addition to her cheerful personality, she is always willing to assist others, whether it be helping a peer, teacher, or assisting her mother in her classroom. Her internal motivation shows in all academic areas. Not only does Emily shine at Stratfield School, she is a role model within the community too. She is happiest when stepping out onto the softball field with her teammates. Being part of a team is important to her. Emily was also a participant in this year's St. Baldry's. She raised money to support childhood cancer. Not only did she raise money, she also cut her hair to be donated to children in need. Everything that Emily does is from the heart. Emily is a kind, highly motivated, and well-liked student. Congratulations, Emily. Erica La Prey, Fairfield Woods. Erica is an outstanding student consistently earning academic honors at Fairfield Woods. She has many interests but particularly enjoys math and social studies because she loves history and problem-solving. Erica is very active at school and prides herself on developing positive relationships with her teachers. Erica volunteers at the Torch Club at Wakeman where she helps with outreach to local service organizations, including Prospect House in Bridgeport. She is an active member of St. Pius Catholic Church, helping her mom teach 2nd graders during the CCD classes. Erica also enjoys acting and recently played Chef Louis in the Woods production of The Little Mermaid. She is considering a career in the world of business, possibly in the fashion industry, but she will have more time at Ludlow High School to explore many viable career options. Congratulations, Erica, on receiving this well-deserved award. Denholm Feldman, Roger Ludlow. Denholm is a kind, empathetic, hard-working, and confident young man who has certainly left a positive imprint on the Roger Ludlow community. As an academic achiever, he is highly regarded by all of his teachers for his enthusiastic participation, consistent willingness to help others, and devoted commitment to the maintenance of his 3-year straight A average. In addition, Denholm has made a point to become an involved member of the Roger Ludlow Middle School community. He serves on the student assistance team where he is a strong role model, mentor, and leader to younger peers. Denholm is a disciplined athlete as well, serving as an exceptional leader on the track team. He is an extremely disciplined and empathetic young man who takes nothing for granted, is extremely goal-oriented, and who is a living example of hard work pays off. Congratulations. Sarah Green from Tomlinson. Sarah epitomizes what it means to be a leader. She volunteers at the Audubon. She plays in the Tomlinson Chamber Orchestra and Choir. She's had a role in the Tomlinson Drama Production all 3 years, and this year impressed us as Grandma Bertha. She is also active with her youth group where she participates in community outreach programs and sings in the church choir. Sarah is currently working towards her Silver Award as a Girl Scout Junior. She does all of this while maintaining an A average. Sarah Green is a well-respected, positive person that people look to when a challenge arises. Sarah appreciates challenges as opportunities to make things better. Congratulations. Deanna Mastrow, Fairfield High, Walter Fitzgerald Campus. Deanna's educational journey has been one described best as courageous, challenging, caring, and creative. Since coming to Walter Fitzgerald Campus in April of 2016, Deanna has consistently demonstrated her interest in making a difference in her community and in helping others. Deanna has been a positive leader and role model. Last year, she participated in a statewide Student Leadership and Restorative Practices Retreat to represent the Fairfield Public Schools. Walter Fitzgerald Campus as Deanna exemplifies the qualities of respect, responsibility, and integrity. Deanna exudes positive energy and humility and is dedicated to creating a positive learning community. She has been successfully participating in the Walter Fitzgerald Community Service Learning Program for 2 years, volunteering at both Sherman Elementary and Tomlinson Middle School. She is described by her teachers as a thoughtful and well-spoken student who always farthers class discussion and consistently offers insight into the human experience. Congratulations. Adam Frank, Fairfield Ludlow High School, Warner House. Adam values and is dedicated to his education. He demonstrates his value of education by enrolling in a challenging academic program which included 7 AP classes: Statistics, US History, Physics, Biology, Government, Calculus B.C., and Spanish. His diligence has resulted in achieving A in all of these AP classes with a GPA of 4.34 and being named an AP Scholar. Adam is president of the Key Club for the past 2 years and a member of the tennis team. His passion for tennis has led him to teach tennis to elementary-age students. He's attended McCashe Hebrew High School for 4 years to further his understanding and appreciation of his Jewish faith. Adam will be attending Washington University in St. Louis in the fall. Teresa Noonan, Fairfield Ludlow High School, Webster House. Tess has shown herself to be a remarkable student across all subject areas but especially in math and science. She is highly engaged and quick to grasp concepts. Tess is a salutatorian of the class of 2018. She will be attending Duke University in the fall. In addition to her excellent academics, Tess has devoted countless hours of physical, intellectual, and emotional effort, mind-body, and heart, to become a high-level competitive athlete, instructor, referee, valued team member, and leader in the martial arts, specifically world champion Taekwondo in Fairfield, Connecticut. In addition to karate, Tess is a serious flute player. She is a member and section leader of the Fairfield Ludlow High School Advanced Wind Symphony and a member of the Greater Bridgeport Youth Orchestra. Tess is an accomplished young woman who I'm sure will do many great things in life. Congratulations. Sharita Metabuena, Fairfield Ludlow High School, Wright House. Sharita is one of Ludlow's top math students. She recently won an award at the Connecticut Science Fair for her research on machine learning. As part of the fair, Sharita developed option pricing models using machine learning. Sharita recently attended the largest mathematics meeting in the world in San Diego for the 2018 Joint Mathematics Meetings. She is the current captain of the Fairfield Ludlow High School Math Team and has been tutoring math for other students in the community. Sharita is planning on studying applied mathematics in college. She has already gotten a great start by taking a summer course in the introduction of applied math at Western Connecticut, State University, and Linear Algebra Course Online through Johns Hopkins. Congratulations. Diraj Ganjikanta, Fairfield Ward High School, Fitz House. Diraj is an ambitious, hard-working, and self-aware student who has risen to be one of the top students in his class, as demonstrated by his consistent, rigorous schedule involving 8 AP courses and a 4.4 GPA. Raj's dedication to his academics is unmatched, and he is an intellectually curious learner who has a genuine thirst for knowledge. He is a team player, never wanting just individual recognition, but instead collective acknowledgement as shown through his involvement in the Boy Scouts of America, Model United Nations Organization, Math Team Debate Team, and Shelton Intermediate Varsity Robotics. Raj applies what he has learned in the classroom to real-world scenarios. Most recently, he won the Dr. Shemali Gosh Memorial Best Young Scientist Award for his junior-year science fair project on the ridding the oceans of excess plastic waste using rechargeable drones. Raj is a valued member of the Ward community who fully and effortlessly exemplifies our Ward acronym. Congratulations. Jack Shea Murphy, Fairfield Ward High School, Pequot House. It is rare to find a student like Jack who is academically talented, athletically superior, highly conscientious, and unusually compassionate. He takes rigorous honors and AP classes, has been a varsity skier and lacrosse player since his freshman year, and has served as captain of both teams this year. Jack's academic and athletic accomplishments alone make him successful. A Spanish philosopher once said, "Tell me to what you pay attention, and I will tell you who you are." Jack's attention is largely focused on leadership and mentorship. His awareness and appreciation for diversity is unusual, sets Jack apart from many of us peers. Jack has devoted his time mentoring at McKinley, 3 preschoolers with learning disabilities, and coaching lacrosse clinics for Bridgeport youth. Lifting others up is not a job for Jack; it is a way of life. We have no doubt that he will continue to give to others while a student at Boston College. Congratulations. Erin Scheller, Fairfield Ward High School, Townsend House. Erin is an empathetic, motivated, and kind student who is committed to academic excellence and portrays our school's mission of being welcoming, academic, respectful, dynamic, and ethical. She has earned a 4.44 GPA and has participated in several challenging classes, including AP Latin, AP Language and Composition, AP US History, AP Biology, Computer Games Design and Programming, and Calculus. In addition, Erin is a member of the National Honor Society, a member of the Latin Club, a member of the Key Club, and is a dedicated cheerleader. Townsend House is very proud of all of Erin's accomplishments and her contributions to Fairfield Ward High School. We are honored to recommend her for the Superintendent's Recognition Award 2018. Congratulations. And we are going to try to take a quick picture, so if we can get the elementary to come right in front of the big taller guys, then it'll be helpful. Next, we'll recommend, we will recognize our Cabe Award winners. The Cabe Student Leadership Award is presented annually in conjunction with the Connecticut Association Board of Education. The criteria for selection is based on exemplary leadership. Michaela Ditschkin-Haramalo, Fairfield Woods. Mickey is an exemplary student at Fairfield Woods, earning academic honors each marking period throughout middle school. Her family moved to Fairfield from Ecuador when she was in the 4th grade, where she quickly mastered the English language. While in Ecuador, Mickey and her mom volunteered at an orphanage helping to build a new playground. Through her participation in Girl Scouts, Mickey raised money for art supplies to be used at a local children's hospital. She is also a member of a Relay for Life team here in Fairfield to help the fight against cancer. Mickey is friendly and respectful with a strong work ethic. She enjoys all subjects in school, especially world language. Mickey may pursue further study in elementary education, but it's keeping the door open to other career paths. Mickey will be a great addition to the freshman class at Ludlow High School. Congratulations, Mickey. James Constanti, Fairfield Woods. Jimmy has excelled at Fairfield Woods and has earned academic honors throughout his middle school years. He is humble and acquisitive, attributes that make him a good student and a great member of the student body. Jimmy is active in his church, St. Thomas, and has helped with community projects like food drives for those in need. His compassion extends to our four-legged friends as well as Jimmy collected food, blankets, and toys for animals in the local shelter. Jimmy loves science and technology, and he is considering a career in the field of auto engineering when he's older. Jimmy also has a great interest in geography, and this passion came to fruition this last year as Jimmy was crowned the National Geographic Bees Champion for Fairfield Woods. We congratulate Jimmy for his achievement and for receiving this honor and wish him well when he joins the freshman class at Ludlow next year. Chloe Berry, Roger Ludlow. Chloe is a compassionate and intelligent young lady who made positive changes in our school community. She is a creative, persistent, and quietly confident student who will excel in anything she seeks to accomplish. Chloe is a well-rounded student and thrives as an academic leader in a Roger Ludlow community. She is a positive role model to her peers and works well with all students. Chloe's continuous tolerance and kindness are qualities she exhibits on a daily basis, exemplifying the outstanding and positive contribution she makes to our school environment. Over the course of her middle school career, she has maintained high honors. Chloe's consistent ability to achieve academically and continually, stand out as a leader in our community, and is something to be admired. She has exemplified a maturity beyond her years with her academic prowess. Chloe is well-deserving of the Cabe Award. Congratulations. Toby S. Toby Sakrane, Roger Ludlow. Toby exhibits leadership qualities on a daily basis through his interactions with staff and peers, as well as his service to our surrounding school community. He is a kind, empathetic, and intelligent young man. During his time at Roger Ludlow Middle School, Toby has rounded out his middle school experience with athletics, our student assistance team, chamber orchestra, and community service activities. His community service work includes being a member of the Torch Club, volunteering at the Prospect House, and other service organizations through his temple. Toby and his family also mentor a young inner-city friend from the Fresh Air Fund. Toby has defined himself as a student who is willing to invest in commitments, find successes in the goals that he sets for himself, and seeks opportunities to grow as a person. His ability to strike a positive balance between his academic successes and dedication to our community is exemplary. Congratulations. Allison Burt, Tomlinson. Ally is a bright, caring, and generous eighth grader at Tomlinson, an active member of the Wakeman Boys and Girls Torch Club. Ally participates in monthly community service programs. Ally volunteers at Cambridge Manor, a nursing home and rehabilitation center, helping the residents in improving their quality of life. As a counselor in training at the Harbor Lights Camp, a special needs camp, Ally has formed trusting relationships with many of the campers. After the violent events in Parkland, Florida, Ally has become involved with organizing a town-wide event to raise awareness for gun control. At Tomlinson, Ally worked with the administration to lead the formation of a new after-school club known as the Kindness Club. Ally has the motivation to make a positive impact wherever she is, and there's no telling how far she will go. Congratulations. Brian Gleason, Tomlinson. Positive thinker, enthusiastic, and curious, inclusive, kind, self-motivated but collaborative as well. These are just some of the words that immediately come to mind when teachers think about Mac Gleason. Mac truly helps bring a cooperative spirit to the Tomlinson School community, where he also participates in chorus, band, and jazz band. His desire to seek out and meet a challenge with an independent confidence, as well as a team spirit, undoubtedly will serve him well as a student, but also as an athlete on the lacrosse field and on the golf course. Mac contributes to the Fairfield community through his involvement with the Wakeman Torch Club, where he volunteers and participates in a variety of charity programs. Mac is an exceptional young man with an exceptionally promising future. Congratulations. Lauren Steensma, Fairfield Ludlow High School. Lauren is a hard-working and intelligent young woman who's incredibly driven. She and her family moved to Fairfield just before the start of the freshman year. She took being the new girl head-on and hasn't stopped making an impact. As a freshman, Lauren was the sole student to sign up for the yearbook staff despite not knowing anyone in the school or anything about making a yearbook. She naturally took on the editor role and has grown the club staff tenfold over the years, creating the most amazing yearbooks Ludlow has seen. Lauren has also held leadership roles in multiple honor societies and organizations, all while keeping the yearbook afloat and her grades high. Lauren has excelled as an academician, achieving her best successes in English, History, and French classes, leading her to a future major in international relations at the University of St. Andrews in Scotland next year. Congratulations. Brian Duffy, Fairfield Ludlow High School. Brian is currently enrolled at both Fairfield Ludlow High School and the Bridgeport Regional Aquaculture Science Program. At Aqua, Brian has been independently researching the development of a mucin-based biomedical adhesive gel to help heal post-surgery wounds. He is currently taking early college entrance courses in environmental science and oceanography. He is a member of Ludlow's varsity soccer and golf team. He's a member of scholars and athletes serving others, where he has served as captain of multiple events that help clean up local beaches. Brian is always available to help his peers and does so regularly. Brian will be attending Texas A&amp;M in the fall, where he plans on studying biochemistry or chemical engineering. Congratulations. Olivia Parisi, Fairfield Ward High School. Olivia is a wonderful example of all that Ward stands for. She has been a starter in two varsity sports, volleyball and basketball, for her career with us. She is a terrific team captain, mentoring the younger players and facilitating the communication with coaches. She volunteers at Bridgeport Hospital and has even used her Spanish-speaking skills to assist patients and nurses. At the top of her class, she has straight As in nine AP classes. Olivia also manages to caddy at the local country club and is the most sought-after female caddy at the club. Most importantly, she is a nice person who is always smiling and willing to help anyone. We are very proud that Olivia is our CAPE Award winner. Congratulations. Ted Orban, Fairfield Ward High School. Ted is our Ward acronym. He embodies every word at Ward High School. W: welcoming. Ted, as co-anchor of Ward TV, interviewed one of our new students to Ward who came from war-torn Iraq. His compassion for others is rare and is demonstrated by contributing to our welcoming, supportive environment. A: academic. Ted excels in his schoolwork. He is the salutatorian of his class with a 4.6 GPA. He has completed six AP classes. R: respectful. Ted's amazing volunteer work with his mission trips to India is just one of his examples of respect for others. D: dynamic. Ted is a three-sport athlete, soccer, ski, and lacrosse. He is the captain of both the ski and lacrosse teams and a student representative on the Board of Education. E: ethical. When faced with a decision, you make the right choice. He is a young man of the highest integrity who wants to make a difference in the world. Congratulations, Ted. We'll ask our winners to step over this way so we can get a good picture.
You should also give each of you, as parents and family of these wonderful students, a round of applause. To the parents. Now, some of you may notice a bunch of nameplates behind us. The Board of Education will have its regular meeting following this event, and so you're all welcome to stay. Or you're all welcome to go home and celebrate with your student. We'll take a short recess while the board members assemble up there, and you assemble outside of the auditorium.